Can I ask everyone to please take your seats? Thank you. I want to call this meeting to order. This is the 23rd Council 34th meeting, Monday, April 15th, 5:00 PM. It's a little after 5:00 PM, but we are waiting for a quorum. This evening, we have, first of all, we want to start with roll call. And I believe that Counselor Penya is excused this evening. However, I understand that she is going to be joining us for one of our items later in the agenda. Counselor Sanchez will be arriving late. All other counselors are present. Okay. So, we are going to start our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge allegiance, and I would ask Counselor Winter if he would lead us in that.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like to, our first order of business is I'd like to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of allowing Counselor Penya to participate in tonight's meeting telephonically without a medical, with a medical or emergency situation. And I need a two-thirds vote on this. Counselors, would, I move, I make that motion? Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, there's a question.
Oh, is there a question? I'm sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just want to clarify, this isn't an emergency, is it? I think that, can you state what the rule says?
Yes, Madam Chair, Counselor Winter. The rule states, actually, this isn't a medical or an emergency situation. Our rule states that a counselor may request to vote by telephone or other similar device when a medical or emergency situation exists. So in this case, that is not what is happening, so move to suspend rules is necessary.
Okay. All in favor? Did you get a second? I believe we did, yes. And I think we have, we need five, five counselors to vote on this. Four, four counselors. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So, everyone agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can answer the vote. Call for the vote.
Okay. Although, I did say that earlier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All opposed.
Okay. So, it fails. Motion fails. Okay. 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 Civic parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign up tape, sign in table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceeding to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will be a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. So, our first order of business this evening is proclamations and presentations. And I guess I'm reading the first proclamation, which is for the Jaguar Gold Dance Team. Can you come forward, please? So let the record show that Counselor Harris has arrived as well. Thank you. Good evening. How are you all? Okay. So I'm going to read the proclamation, and our standard procedure is after we've read the proclamation, if you'd like to say something, and then you'll come forward to receive the proclamations.
Yes, thank you.
So, the first proclamation reads, "Whereas on March 30th, 2019, the Attrisco Heritage Academy Jaguar Gold Dance Team won the 2019 New Mexico Activities Association Dance 5A State Spirit Championship at the Pitt, and whereas the Jaguar Gold Dance Team is an integral part of the Attrisco Heritage Academy Cheer and Dance Spirit Program, and whereas the Jaguar Gold Cheers performs and supports athletics and activities at school during games and at community events to promote school pride, spirit, and excellence, and whereas Jaguar Gold is comprised of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors who perform hip-hop, jazz, palm, and contemporary genres of dance, and whereas the 18 Jaguar Gold State Champs are Alyssa Ramos, Anna Gutierrez, Anaya Vargas, Angelina Flores, Selena Musot, I hope I don't destroy these names, Danielle Pyle, Emily Er, Gively Gomez, Ireland Shay, Jaden Lacour-Britten, Jay Dean-Peralta, Janissa Castro, Kaylee Brown, Carissa Fiero, Cristela Montoya, Kaitlyn Estrada, Priscilla Nieto, Tanya Mendez, and... Whereas, despite a rigorous practice and performance schedule, Jaguar Gold dancers have excelled in their academic studies by collectively maintaining a three-point GPA, and whereas Jaguar Gold dancers had the endurance necessary to compete in various competitions throughout the year in order to meet the qualification requirements of the NMAA State Spirit Competition, and whereas on day two of the state championship competition, Jaguar Gold performed a compelling contemporary dance routine to help raise awareness about teen suicide, which put them in the lead for the state championship, and whereas with ongoing support and encouragement from Principal Irene Cisnetos, Athletic Director Adrian Ortega, Head Dance Coach Annabelle Cadena, Managers Ray Lynn Luhan, Brandon Quigley, and Josiah Ramos, Jaguar Gold dancers were able to execute their spirited championship performance with precision, grace, and pride. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby congratulates the Attrisco Heritage Academy Jaguar Gold Dance Team for winning the state championship and for exemplifying their motto that anything is possible." Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, Counselors. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Annabelle Cadena. I am the Head Dance Coach at Attrisco Heritage Academy. With me are the dancers, as many as could show up today. We definitely appreciate the recognition. We appreciate that the girls are brought forward, the dancers are brought forward to, to be examples in our community, to be a pillar of something positive that the younger community can look up to. Our theme was suicide prevention. It was a very difficult routine, a challenging routine, because the girls did have to tap into those emotions and struggles that someone who is dealing with that may be, may be having issues with. And so, the routine was very, like, as you mentioned, compelling. We do appreciate all of the recognition, and, and I want to say thank you on behalf of, of the dancers and Attrisco Heritage Academy.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Counselors? Thank you. You can come forward and receive your proclamations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, good job. Nice job. Good work. Good work. Nice job. Way to go. Congrats. How you doing?
Congratulations. That's so pretty.
Congratulations. Way to go.
It's nice to see such accomplished young people. Our second proclamation this evening is going to be read by Counselor Davis and two other counselors. Gathering of Nations, Counselor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask the Matthews family and the organizers for the Gathering of Nations to come join us. This has become a sort of annual event for us at the City Council to help alert the community and recognize the contributions of the Gathering of Nations to our community, and we're so grateful to have you all here. So, as folks are coming down, I'll just get started, if that's okay, and we'll let you introduce folks and tell us what's coming in the next couple of weeks. And so, the, excuse me. Whereas the Gathering of Nations powwow came to Albuquerque unofficially way back in 1983 at the University of Albuquerque as a place where native people could come together each year to celebrate and share their culture, and whereas since its humble beginnings, the Gathering of Nations is now considered to be the largest Native American cultural festival in North America, and currently housed at Expo New Mexico and our state fairgrounds in District 6 in Southeast Texas, I might add. Whoever's next?
Did you have another counselor designated, Madam Chair?
It doesn't say anyone else.
Let me just, yeah. Great. Whereas the event has grown to attract over 500 tribes from the US and Canada, and has been beyond that, I might add, and has become a travel destination for tens of thousands of visitors worldwide. And whereas the economic impact of the Gathering of Nations brings to the City of Albuquerque on an annual basis, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and whereas through the years, their founder, Dr. Derek Matthews, Dr. Matthews, and their daughter Melanie have produced this event along with friends and volunteers as a labor of love, and have dedicated their lives to honoring the tribal traditions and teachings passed down through generations. Whereas the 35th Annual Gathering of Nations commences on Thursday, April 25th, 2019. Be it proclaimed by this council, the governing body in the City of Albuquerque, recognizes the cultural and economic impact of the Gathering of Nations brings to the city, and encourages our community to support this extraordinary event. Thank you so much for continuing to do this in Albuquerque. Thanks for bringing it to us, and welcome to us. Tell us a little bit about the, this year's festivities and what we can expect.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Melanie Matthews, the, the daughter, quote unquote. My parents were supposed to be here, but as you know, we are one week out from the event, and so they are probably at Expo planning stuff right now. Gathering of Nations going into our 36th year, and our third year at Expo. It has been an amazing experience moving into a different facility. We've been able to have a traditional horse and rider beaded regalia parade, both days of the event, which is really spectacular. As well as the event attracts people from all over the world, and the significance is celebrating native culture, which is truly a part of New Mexico and a part of American heritage. I think all of us, if we look back into the roots of our own family, there's probably some native blood there with everyone. So, Gathering of Nations is open to everyone. It is for the public, and we are excited going into our event. I think the turnout's going to be great. The international, pre-sales, the international audience is definitely coming to the event this year in, in large numbers. So I want to thank each of you on the City Council, as well as the Mayor's Office, and all that have supported the event to keep us here and to keep it as a successful, viable cultural and community event.
Yes, Counselor Benton?
I just want to encourage everyone to, to go out. If you've never been to the Gathering of Nations, it's, it's something to behold. It's, it's a time of great excitement, and it is celebrating Native American culture, but everyone is welcome. So it's really a, I think the first time I went was back in the early 80s, and it's always so powerful and a great experience. Everyone should, should go check it out if you, if you've never seen it, or even if you have. Take care.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Madam Vice President?
Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry. I only had two on my presentation. Two, do you have a proclamation?
Presentation.
Oh, presentations.
Yes, I have a presentation, and, and Counselor Benton?
Pardon me? Are we have microphones? Microphone's not on. Oh. Sorry. Sorry. Counselor Gibson, go ahead. You had a presentation?
Yes, thank you. So, I don't see them in the audience yet, but there are a lot of faces out there. I wonder if Maeve Trager-Tarrant and Izzy Stokes? There they are, right in front. I was looking back farther. So come on up to the podium, if you would. There's two different mics there, and there is an overhead, so I think that you got a little... Heads up on that. Anyway, I just wanted to introduce them by, by, first by saying that they got ahold of me by email and said they wanted to come in. They were worried about, not worried, they were, you know, concerned, and they had studied quite a bit about the issues around the Clean and Green Ordinance. So, they came in, and I thought I was going to tell them about the Clean and Green Ordinance, but they already knew all about that, and I just sat there and listened to them, and I learned a lot from these two young women. So, so glad to see you here. So we have, again, Maeve Trager-Tarrant, is it Tarant, Terrant?
Terrant.
Terrant, okay. And Izzy Stokes. So, we'll let you guys do your thing. Thank you for being here.
Vice President Borrego and members of the City Council. My name is Maeve Trager-Tarrant, and I live in District 7.
And my name is Isabella Stokes, and I live in District 2. We would like to thank you for inviting us to present our, to you our opinion on the very important issue that is plastic pollution. Midway Island is a small island off the coast of California, and it's considered the most remote island in the entire world, yet it's still being greatly impacted by our plastic waste that we produce every single day. One of the main inhabitants of Midway Island is the Laceyan albatross. So the albatross will go to Midway Island to breed and raise their chicks. Because of the limited skills an albatross chick is born with, they, they can't feed themselves, so their parents will go out over the open ocean and feed them, or, and hunt for food for their young. Because of the recent rise in oceanic plastic, the albatross parents will be looking, and they will see the bright colors of the plastic and think it's food. So they will scoop it up and feed it to their young. And every year, over a third of the albatross on Midway Island die with plastic in their stomachs. With plastic in their stomachs. And we're not affected by this, but they are, and sometimes people don't even know about it.
Do you know what this number is? This is the number of pounds of plastic that is released into the ocean every hour. That's right. Every hour, plastic that we contribute to is forced into, into the ocean, and it kills so many animals. When the plastic is found in the bodies of the albatross, the toxins from the plastic is released into the atmosphere, and that can destroy the homes of so many creatures on land. When these toxins are released into the atmosphere, that could result in bleaching of coral. So it doesn't just affect the creatures on land, but creatures in the ocean too. It's not fair that we use this enormous amount of plastic, and it kills animals we sometimes don't even know exist, or that are going extinct.
With all this on your minds, those of you who disagree with the Albuquerque Clean and Green Retail Ordinance, please think again. Think of the New Mexico you know and love becoming part of the plastic world. If you don't change your mind now, I know you'll regret it later, when the plastic begins to take over and destroy the once luscious earth.
Have you ever seen a plastic bag floating in the air on a windy day? Well just imagine, all the plastic that's ever been made, which is around 33 billion, 600 million tons of plastic floating in the air in New Mexico, getting stuck on cacti, destroying our mountains, suffocating road riders, and polluting the wondrous sky that New Mexico treasures so.
People always say that, kids of the future, right? Well if that's true, what are you leaving the future with now? A world addicted to plastic? It's not right, and it doesn't have to be this way. Plastic was invented over 100 years ago, but people couldn't use it, it wasn't readily available to the public until about 50 years ago. Instead, people used wood and ceramics, and I feel like we can go back to that. We chose this path, and now we have to fix it.
Despite this, there is still hope. You can help the future of the albatross and the earth so easily. City Council members and Vice President Borrego, you have the power to inspire other cities to change their ways, to make the world a better place to live in. I assume that many of you have read or even watched the movie The Lorax. Well, they live in a plastic world called Sneadville, where they get their air delivered in the morning instead of water, and that could become a reality. And what if people don't have enough money to pay for that air? Or what if we run out of that air? The world would be done. It would be doomed, because there would be no humanity left.
All you have to do is pass the Albuquerque Clean and Green Retail Ordinance, and with enough support, we can make the world a better place. If somebody sees that Albuquerque, which is in New Mexico, one of the poorest states in the US, can change their ways and adapt, then why can't they? You can inspire more people to do the same.
We strongly recommend that you pass the Albuquerque Clean and Green Ordinance. Vice President Borrego and members of the City Council, thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen ladies. That was very well done. Counselor Davis has a comment, and Counselor Gibson has a comment.
Madam Chair, just a point of order. I wanted to ask Ms. Nyer, I know the administration has some seats reserved over, and we have a few folks outside that I think were waiting to get in. I wonder if it'd be possible to release those if the administration didn't need them anymore?
Absolutely. Please come on in, sit down.
Thanks so much.
Counselor Gibson. And I, I would ask people that are standing, if you could try to take a seat also. Thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Vice President. Girls, can you just tell us where you go to school, and, and what grade you're in, and how you got interested in this?
We go to school at Jefferson Middle School, and, so, and we're both in 6th grade. We're both in Ms. Richard's English Language Arts class. So, in that class, we are doing an exhibition project where we choose a topic that we are interested in, and then we use our, like, talents, or what we like to do, to make what we want to do happen. So, we decided to do plastic pollution, because we had both done more research on this in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much for coming forward. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next item. Mr. Harness, I believe you're in the crowd. Thank you. We have a presentation, oh, I'm sorry. We have Commissioner Hall regarding the PRC. And you'll be next, Mr. Harness. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, I just wanted to introduce our PRC Commissioner Cynthia Hall. We, we had a discussion a couple of weeks, probably more than a couple of weeks back, and we appreciate her wanting to come down and talk a little bit about what the Public Regulation Commission does, but also some of the recent happenings up in Santa Fe and at the state level that affect us all. And this council also weighed in a little bit on, on one of those with a memorial during the legislative session, but wanted to welcome, personally welcome Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Hall, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Benton, and other City Council members. I really appreciate the invitation to come here. It's an honor to be here, and I'm very glad to be able to share some information about what our agency does and what's been happening recently in Santa Fe associated with energy issues. Just a little background, for those of you who don't know much about how the PRC actually operates, it regulates monopoly companies that provide services to the community in the areas of gas, electric, water, transportation services that charge rates, and telecommunications, companies that are monopolies. And so, you have to think about what utility regulation that our agency does as being a substitute for competition. In the regular competitive sphere, there is competition which forces prices down. But when you have a monopoly operating, because the, the service requires a monopoly structure, then you have to have a regulatory agency to make sure that their costs, that they want to seek compensation for, or their profit levels are within reasonable levels. So, and, so our agency, when we set rates, have to consider their costs, their revenues, and their profit that they enjoy. And we do that by holding essentially trials. They're called hearings. But when, for example, say an electric utility company wants to raise their rates, they will come in and file a petition with the commission, with all the supporting documentation, which can run to thousands of pages, seeking a rate increase. And then the, we open a DACA that essentially starts a case, just like a district court case. You should think of us in this role as kind of a little mini court system. We have staff, economists, and engineers, and lawyers who join the case. They represent the interests of the public, but also, actually, they interest, they represent the balance of the public interest versus the company's interest. And then other parties will jump into the case as the, as their issues dictate. Environmental groups, consumer advocacy groups, military bases, all kinds of parties will get into a rate case. And then the evidence is all presented by all the parties, cross-examination occurs pursuant to the rules of evidence, just like in a trial before a regular district court. And then the hearing examiner, which is a very experienced utility lawyer, we have five of those, they hear cases frequently, will write a decision that they then recommend to the commission. It's called a recommended decision, and for a utility rate case, they can run over 200 pages. They're usually very complex cases. And then the, the commission relies on advice from their lawyers that advise the commission, the general counsel's office, and study the case, and finally renders a decision. If any of the parties to the case are unhappy with our decision, they can appeal it to the State Supreme Court. So, that's our process. And we believe it's very thorough, and as I say, we have to examine all these characteristics of the company's operations in deciding whether or not we want to adopt the, the rate they ask for, or if we want to lower it, or reject it altogether. So that's what we do. So, and in the course of making decisions, sometimes when we make a decision in a case that pertains to a given utility, it may apply to all other utilities as well. And in that way, we actually effectively set policy on occasion. Not all the time, but for example, we had to decide a case earlier this year, or actually, it was late last year, on what would be the effect of the Federal Tax Cut and Jobs Act on utilities, and how should they pass that tax break back through to consumers. And that applied to absolutely every company we... And that applied to absolutely every company we regulated. That was rather unusual, but that happens. So, what I'd like to do now is kind of hop over to some events that have happened, particularly what was the Energy Transition Act that was passed in the legislature and signed by the governor during the term, and went into effect, I think, immediately, because it has bearing on policy. It was actually a very broad stroke of policy decision-making that might have otherwise been handled piecemeal at our agency. But, you know, the legislature created the statutes that established our agency, and they can alter them as they choose. In this case, what they altered was our statute that pertains to the Renewable Portfolio Standard, which is a statute that sets the requirement for utility, electric utility companies, to provide a certain amount of renewable energy-sourced electricity in the electricity that they sell to the customers across the state. All the electric, all three vertically-integrated monopoly utility companies have to comply with it, and there's also a portion of it that pertains to all the electric co-ops as well, but they had a lesser standard to comply with. That Renewable Portfolio Standard required that by the year 2020, these utilities had to have twenty percent of their retail electric sales come from renewable energy sources. What that Energy Transition Act did was to continue into the future that requirement and ratchet it up, so that by 2015, you have to have, well, no, I'm sorry, by 2025, they have to have twenty-five percent. By 2030, I think it's forty percent, by twenty, no, by 2030, it has to be fifty percent. By 2040, it has to be eighty percent renewable energy-sourced electricity in our state. And then, by 2045, it has to be a hundred percent, not renewable, but clean energy-sourced in our state. So, this standard is one of the most stringent in the nation. There are only three other places so far, I think California, Washington, D.C., District of Columbia, and Hawaii. But there are at least half a dozen other states that have them, that are considering similarly stringent standards. And of course, the objective is to address the crisis of climate change. And so, in that sense, it's a very broad, strong policy stroke in the environmental area. Another thing the bill did, which also relates to climate change and the effect of the energy industry on our air quality, is to provide PNM with a hundred percent cost recovery for purposes of closing their two remaining coal-fired plants in our state. And so, that's, you know, that's also a very strong signal in support of protection of the environment, especially against the worst effects of climate change going forward. So, these costs will be borne by PNM ratepayers. And the financing was designed so that there would be an opportunity for the company to issue a bond through an affiliate that would be secured by the ratepayers, and that would ensure that the bonds would be triple-A bonds, very, very highly rated, and therefore able to earn, able to win a much lower interest rate. So, that was a design implemented so as to mitigate the cost impact to ratepayers. However, there is a cost impact, and one thing that PNM ratepayers will see, once the final figure is figured out of what the costs will be, and that will take a certain amount of time, because they have to work out the details of replacement costs and so forth. But ratepayers will see a separate charge on their bills that specify that this particular charge is associated with the secured function, the secured bond that's issued, to enable the utility to raise the money quickly, to be able to conduct all the changes that need to be, all the work that has to be involved in those plant closures. So, as I say, it was quite a broad stroke of environmental policy, which I believe the legislature wanted to be able to deal with in a fashion that would be probably a lot more rapid than what you would see at our agency, because certainly whenever there is any one aggrieved party to a case before us, they have the right to go before the Supreme Court and litigate. And those decisions can sometimes take several years, and time is of the essence when we're concerned with climate change. So, I wanted to mention that that was going to happen. And I understand also that the city of Albuquerque has their own standard for renewable energy. I think it's twenty-five percent by 2020, whereby you want your buildings to be served by at least twenty-five percent of renewable energy by the year 2025. And I think the standard will, probably at that point, eclipse what your efforts are going to have to be, because the electricity, if all goes well, coming through the lines from PNM will be higher than that after 2025. So, I could talk further on other issues, but I probably have passed.
Any questions by the councilors? Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Ms. Hall, for that. But I don't think you really got to the part about what was beneficial for the taxpayers. I mean, I understand that we're backing those bonds for the costs of the generators, but what are we getting for it? That's what we're giving up. What are we getting for that?
We are getting the assurance that we, here in New Mexico, are cleaning up our air as much as we can, and that we will be living in a, at least locally, a cleaner environment. This is for the future. This is an act for the future. As an environmentalist, I wholeheartedly support this type of renewable portfolio standard. I think it shows leadership. I think other states are looking at states doing this, and they're willing to adopt these standards too, as long as they're not the only one doing it. So, I think in that sense, it's a very good thing to do. As a commissioner, you know, and having lost jurisdiction over some of those issues, it gave me a little heartburn for a while, but I can see the big picture. And I think the big picture is quite an imperative. I mean, you know, when we see presentations like the one that went just right before me, having to do with issues of sustainability, we have to be able to live a more sustainable life, and this is a big part of it. So, I hope we're, I'm happy that we're showing this kind of leadership in the clean air arena.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Ms. Hall, and thank you for serving on the PRC. I know that can be a daunting task at times.
Thank you.
And I assume, maybe I shouldn't assume, but listening to you, this could be a huge increase for the ratepayer, if I'm understanding what's happening. Is that true or not?
No, I don't think it'll be huge. I don't. Because, you know, costs are spread out over, I think, thirty years under the statute. And as I say, they're getting a much lower, ordinarily, if this were gone, if this were treated through ordinarily traditional ratemaking, utilities generally permitted a rate of return somewhere between nine and ten percent. But this will be at a very high, triple-A bond rating would be more like three and four percent. So, that's a savings. And actually, something I didn't mention, is that this, the level of activity that is going to have to be carried out, is going to be an incredible economic development boom for the state. And it's going to go on through 2045 at least. So, I think that the state is definitely going to benefit economically. It's not just the clean air, and not just the moral, you know, imperative that we're trying to achieve. It's also that this is going to be a new wave of new energy development that's going to only help our economy.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, the answer was kind of broad about what the rate increase is. Can you give me a percentage, a guess of the percentage of increase in the electric rate for the next three years, five years, and ten years?
You know, I really appreciate your question. I've asked it too, and I've gotten the same answer. We don't exactly know. I mean, I believe it's not going to be huge at all. I think it's probably going to be something that's going to be manageable, but I wish I could tell you, and I can't.
Counselor Jones?
If I may follow up, so, you say it's not going to be huge, in your opinion. What do you consider huge, and what do you consider manageable? Are you talking three percent manageable, five percent manageable, or seventy percent huge? Can you just kind of give me a, you're the most knowledgeable person here, so when you say it's not going to be huge, I want to know how not huge it's going to be.
Madam Chair, and Counselwoman Jones, I really wish I could answer this. I can tell you, if this were handled at the PRC, I could tell you, down to a fraction of a percent. But this is done by the legislature. It's an eighty-two-page-long bill. Parts of it are not as clear as I would like to see, and none of the steps have been taken. So, I just don't know. So, but I'd be glad to come back once I get somebody to give me an analysis and tell you. I'd like to know myself.
Thank you. So, basically, we don't know what the increase will be?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hall, you're running for office now? Is that correct?
I'm going to run for reelection. You bet.
Thank you. All right. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, Commissioner Hall, as I recall during the legislature, I realize that the legislature does their own fiscal impact report, but as I recall, looking at SB 489 and the testimony that was provided by PNM and in the fiscal impact report, PNM, and they mentioned this in the Albuquerque Journal on the day before the final vote, PNM estimated that residential ratepayers would see a reduction of about six and a half dollars on their average utility bill, because the cost of producing solar is lower than the overall long-term cost of producing coal-fired power, and therefore, they would expect a lower return because there's less capital involved. Is that consistent with your recollection, or do you recall?
Well, I don't remember seeing that, but that is true. However, it depends on, I suppose, at what year you're looking at, and what level, at what percentage of enrichment of renewables the fuel is. Definitely, there will be a reduction as a result of that, because solar and wind are free, and the cost of the fuel is passed directly through the utility to the consumers. So, anytime you can get a pass-through of free fuel, you will, your rates will go down for that reason. What I don't know is what the, you know, there was a, I guess the general ballpark of costs for these plant closures is in the area of around four hundred million dollars. So, if you spread that out over thirty years and apportion it to approximately, let's see, I think they have maybe four thousand or five thousand households in PNM's footprint, that might give you a rough estimate of what the cost could be per household. But definitely, because it's renewable, and because the renewable portion will increase, you know, throughout time, that will be an improvement in our rates over the long term. And I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Harness, this is a presentation from Edward Harness regarding the CPOA's first quarterly report of 2019. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice President Borrego, I apologize. Honorable counsel, I'm here to present the quarterly report as mandated by the Oversight Ordinance. I believe you're getting a handout now. As far as the casework goes, there were thirty-two cases administrative, with findings of administratively closed. There was one sustained violation with a discipline recommendation of thirty-two-hour suspension. There were three not sustained, three exonerated, two unfounded, and one sustained not based on original complaint. And in that case, we made no disciplinary recommendation. We made a policy change recommendation because it involved the old use-of-force policy, which has since been rewritten and approved by the monitors. We felt it was not appropriate for discipline in that case. You have attached the policy worksheet. The Office of Policy Analysis for the Albuquerque Police Department did not meet in the first three months of this year. The next meeting will be April 18th. On the other side, those are the cases that went through the Policy Procedures Review Board, and they are annotated by date and SOP number. And in the final column, you see the action. The action meaning IMT, it went to the monitoring team, or thirty days, it was sent out for thirty-day review and comment. The contracted council conducted a four-hour training for board members regarding the Oversight Ordinance, board policies and procedures, and the CASA. As you are all aware, the board was involved in extensive work on the Oversight Ordinance amendments, and again, we thank you for that work. And as far as outreach, attendance at numerous community policing councils, a presentation to the community policing councils' strategic review, vision, and planning session, a presentation to the Coronado Kiwanis Club, and we have undertaken a redesign of the agency brochure, which will be ready by the end of April prior to the next monitor's visit. That brochure will include a postcard allowing someone to write a brief synopsis of a complaint, rip it off, and drop it into the mail. It will have postage included. So, it will be a very simple, straightforward process for anyone who comes across the brochure at the fifty-five spots where we have them throughout the community. And other than that, would stand for questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harness. Any questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate your being here this evening. Okay. Our next item of business is our economic development discussion, and there being none tonight, we will move on to item five, Administration Question and Answer Period. Are there any questions to the administration or councilors? Counselor Harris?
Sure. And it's more of a comment. I was talking to staff today, and I actually had lunch with our city attorney recently, and someone came in who was involved in the scooter industry, and talking about the regulation that we proposed, and how it turned out to be a little bit more onerous than we thought. And one thing I think I'd like to work with the city attorney and administration on is that it occurred to me that we really don't have an Administrative Procedure Act in the city. In other words, there's not a process that we go through where we have regulations that are promulgated. Like in the state, for instance, if we're going to promulgate a regulation, the agency must then send the proposed regulation to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General then has hearings on the regulation, and there's public comment, and then there can be an opportunity to really make sure the regulation is the right thing. And I'm not criticizing any agency for doing what it thought was right, because we have public servants who do their best and call balls and strikes. I'm not suggesting anything else. But maybe we should actually have a process where the industry can be heard on these regulations before they become essentially law, and not just issued by an agency. So, I think something like that, and I think we'd like to work together on, and I'm going to be having my staff look into it, and we're going to move forward, at least I'd like to. So, I don't know if you have any comment on that or not.
Sarita?
Yeah. Thank you, counsel. Vice President Borrego, Counselor Harris, we agree, you know, different departments do, within their own rules, have rules about how to make other rules, but there is not a Uniform Administrative Procedures Act for the city, and I think it's a good idea. Also, I think we do have some ideas for how to push past the initial roadblocks with the scooter program, so the planning department would be happy to talk about that with any of you. Thanks.
Any other questions? Counselor Davis?
Counselor Harris, I appreciate those questions, and I agree with you. I think we ought to take a revisit of that. I know we looked at it during the last administration, and I'd love to think about that with you. Ms. Nyer, I know you and I had a chance to have a conversation last week, and I was hoping you could give us a more public update. You and I had a conversation when, maybe this time last year roughly, trying to get an update on the status of APD's progress in implementing what was then the 2015 report on recommendations for improving APD's response to child abuse protocols. As I recall, in 2014, after the Omari Varela case, this APD commissioned, with the support of the council, a sort of a top-to-bottom review of APD's, not just the handling of that case, but more best practices around the Southwest and how to deal with this. And then, as I recall, when your administration came in, I think the new chief found that still in his inbox to implement some, what, two, maybe three years later? And y'all had made some early progress, but I think the last few weeks have really highlighted again that we're not quite done on working with this. You and I had a chance to speak not quite done on working with this. You and I had a chance to speak about it, and I'd love if you could give us an update on where APD is in implementing those recommendations and your own, and what is left to be done. And I'm sure we'll get into that more in our budget process in a few weeks, but if you could tell us where we are in that policy process would be incredibly helpful.
Sure. Counsel Vice President Borrego, Counselor Davis, I'd like to invite Lieutenant Nick Sanders and Sergeant Joel Lucetti to come down and give you an update, but while they're making their way down here, I do want to say that in addition to the policy implementation that they'll speak about, we've also just been able to build a really great relationship with the folks at CYFD from the new administration. We talk on an almost daily basis, and I think even when policy is said and done, if you don't have those personal relationships, none of it works. So I'm proud to say that our folks have done a really good job building that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant.
Good evening, officers. Thank you for being here. And if you'll just announce your name and your position, please.
I'm Lieutenant Nicholas Sanders, within Juvenile Section CID.
And I'm Joel Lucetti. I'm the Sergeant of Crimes Against Children at APD.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis, did you have any specifics?
Sure. Lieutenant, I think when we left this conversation last year, the administration had made some progress. When we left this conversation last year, the administration had made some progress in reviewing our protocols to ensure that when officers respond to a child abuse case or an allegation that may involve abuse and neglect, officers may have access to CYFD records. We were having some issues with, I think that was available by RTCC, but not necessarily in the hands of our field officers, and I know we were discussing how that worked. There were also some concerns about the right protocols between field officers and on-call detectives when they were called out to provide advice on on-scene issues. And finally, I think there was a question in the 2015 report that suggested that our officers perhaps should be implementing, or we should be starting to implement scenario-based training that would incorporate these types of child abuse issues based directly on actual experiences. And I'm curious if we've made any progress in that regard.
We do have progress in all those sections, sir. As the council might know, we have mandatory training that constantly hits our officers, usually biannually. It's our MOE that we travel to. Within the MOE, especially this year in itself, we've had additional education on reporting to child juvenile calls, to what mandates are necessary, what our SOP states, and what our special orders state. Those implementations have also traveled over to the academy in itself, and in the reality-based training that the cadets are getting, they are getting specific juvenile exposure to figure out how to progress with that and get the best practices. Additionally, in the summer of 2018, we did implement special orders outlining that mandates our officers, whenever they respond to a juvenile call, contact our real-time crime center to access not only the information available specifically about the address that the real-time crime center might have, but also to touch into what is commonly referred to as the CYFD portal. So that is ongoing and has been ongoing.
Madam Chair, if I could just follow up. Lieutenant, are you aware, and maybe Ms. Nyar, I'm just curious. I know that was a challenge for us to get that implemented in a way. Have we had a chance to evaluate how effective that's been, or how often that portal's been used? You know, are we auditing that to be sure that it's being used more effectively, and are we seeing that it's generating a better sort of response from our agency, or handoff to CYFD where appropriate?
With... Counselor, with any mandate within the department, our officers are held to the accountability of either follow it or don't follow it. If you don't follow it, there's repercussions that come. We don't... I don't have specific statistical information as far as how often it is used, but I would have to argue that we're in the high 90s as far as utilizing. All the officers take the juvenile calls especially extremely seriously in light of a lot of the tragedies that have happened.
Sure.
They are pushing heavily for it.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I can just follow up with one more, and I'll be done. I see Chief Scott in the back taking some notes, and I wonder, Chief, if you could just help us, maybe... You don't have to come down. Just help us maybe capture some of that data, or give us those RTCC reports to let us know how often that port is being used, so that we can evaluate how effective that is. Would be helpful in the going forward. It would be super helpful.
If we're preparing that information now, that overruns the time.
That'd be great.
We'll have to.
Thank you. And then I just want to ask, Lieutenant, we... One of the challenges that the department faced in terms of staffing and everything else was that with the high-profile nature of a number of these cases, and again, in this last week, we always see the number of reports increase, both the CYFD and the police department. And at one point last year, that had created some significant backlog in terms of the ability of the handful of detectives we have available to respond to those cases. Can you give us a status on what the status of your backlog is? I know the administration has requested additional positions in the budget, but I'm curious sort of what the average caseload looks like for a CACU detective right now.
That's a very fluctuating number. The detectives are usually averaging 30-plus cases that they're holding, and those range from very simplistic cases to some very difficult cases. The detectives are very good at grabbing and going with the most significant cases and running with them. One of the things within CACU specifically, the Child Against... Crimes Against Children unit, is the stress that comes with the job.
These are the hardest cases.
So our detectives, my detectives are very stressed. I do see turnover. We are trying to fill those positions as quickly and as efficiently as possible. I'm a man of belief of quality over quantity, so I want to make sure whoever we're getting in there is a fit for the position. But we're actively seeking that. We have some proposals within the department as far as to add maybe some civilian aspects to it to reduce some of that caseload. And then we have met with the Secretary of CYFD twice so far, and we have another follow-up meeting with them, to also address some of the intake criteria that CYFD uses compared to APD, to see if we can streamline what we're doing.
That's great. I thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say, I've heard from the Secretary himself that, like, working with APD has been phenomenal and really eye-opening in terms of how he's evaluating CYFD's internal resources. So I'll kick... We have a lot to do tonight, and I want to... I'll kick this down the road before our budget discussions, but it'd be great to have some of that number, so that we can look at how to best allocate the resources we need. We know this is an issue in our community. We've made a lot of progress, but we know there's more to be done, and I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Lieutenant Sanders, I have a lot of... We've worked in the past on... When you were in a different capacity, and I have a lot of confidence in your leadership on this. And I just want to say, counselors, that, you know, my impression of the new leadership at CYFD in Santa Fe is excellent. The new director seems to be of the highest caliber and with a great track record. And we also, of course, appreciate the new leadership at APD and really taking this on in a different way from the past and with the Keller administration. And in the past, there was a lot of finger-pointing, you know, "APD didn't do this right, CYFD didn't do this right." I just want to put in a pitch for us to point the finger at ourselves as a community, too, that we've got to report these things, you know. In one of the recent cases, I was shocked to read about, you know, the reports coming after the fact. And that was so saddening to see that. And it's all on us to report these. When we see something like this, to say something. And if there's a doubt, we have ways to report that and to properly report it without fear that it's going to be mishandled by your agency. But I just want to put that out there for us as a community, because I think there's a lot of that that goes on where we go, "Well, I don't know. Maybe it's okay, but maybe it's not." So...
Counsel Vice President Borrego, Counselor Benton, thank you for that comment, and thank you for joining everyone at the Child Abuse March on the weekend. We totally agree that it is time to stop finger-pointing and take responsibility for our own actions, and also to help each other fill those gaps. So actually, this coming Thursday, we are convening with both CYFD and UNMH to talk about how we start to plug those gaps and even change the way that we respond to these calls, so that there's a social service response before or contemporaneously with a law enforcement response. So thank you for that.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have to say that in the last week and a half, I've been very disheartened by the events that have happened with our children. As I look around the room, I've seen many children come before us, especially on the Clean and Green Ordinance. And, you know, it makes me very sad, because I go on social media, and I see comments asking our leaders to step up. And I think it's really important that we hear from you, because you are the people that... I don't envy your job, but you're the first... You're our first responders, and you're the people that are there. One of the... I mean, one of the questions that always comes to mind, in my mind, is the punishment meeting the crime, because it seems to me if people understand that the punishment is going to be severe enough, the crime, they'll think twice about it. So I would like to, in your reports, at some point, hear some recommendations, because I understand things fall through the cracks, especially when you have governments, jurisdictions, et cetera, involved. So if that's something you could be thinking about in the back of your mind, because I think the council would probably want to, and the administration, to push forward some things to our legislators that could maybe tighten those gaps. And also for the behavioral, which it seems like you're already addressing, is the behavioral issues, and how do we create programs that can stop this from happening. So I would really appreciate if at some point in time, you know, you could contact my office with that type of information. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. And I guess that will move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next order of business is our journal, item six. I move approval of the April 1st journal.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments? Not? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. On a seven... Is there seven of us here tonight? Our next item is Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R 133 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R 133 is declaring the intent of the city to issue metropolitan redevelopment bonds in the aggregate amount of $21,500,000 for the Broadstone Nob Hill project.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on this particular issue. We need two-thirds of the council. Counselors present. So any questions? Counselor Harris?
Yes. Pulling it out of a committee and then acting on it at the same meeting is kind of unusual, but I want to hear from the administration and see why this is being done and if it's supported.
Ms. Nyar, can you respond to that?
Yes. Madam Vice President and Counselor Harris, I just wanted to mention that there was a... Just an oversight at the FGO meeting last Monday. We didn't realize that they were requesting immediate action, and so I asked that Counselor Davis make this motion tonight to bring that on. And both the department and bond counsel are present today.
Okay, so this wasn't... So this was actually received a do-pass at Finance?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That makes things different.
Do we have any... Mr. Campbell, are you prepared to speak on this issue?
Madam Vice President, I'm prepared to answer any questions, but we would like to move this along so that the project can get moving. It was agreed to at the Finance and Government, and as was stated, was an oversight that we didn't ask for immediate action.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I believe we have our bond counsel present also. Is that correct? Is he... Yeah. In case anyone has any questions of him? Any questions, Counselor? Nope. I guess not. You're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If being no further discussion, then all in favor? Say aye. Aye?
Yes.
And any opposed? Nope. Okay. Very good. So we will move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing EC 376 and placing it on the May 6 council agenda for final action. EC 376 is the mayor's appointment of Ryan Harrigan to the Labor Management Board.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Harrigan, are you present?
Hi.
No, I guess not. Okay. This also requires a two-thirds majority of counselors. Any discussion? No. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? No. That motion passes. Okay. I move approval of the letter of introduction. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? No. Okay. That passes. So we go to item number eight. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Let me get my script here. Just a second, please. Here it is. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, April 8, 2019, and reports out the following items. In a matter of EC 336, 337, 347, and 366, that receipt be noted. In a matter of EC 344, 349, 350, and 365, that they be adopted, or be approved, rather. In a matter of EC 354, that it be without recommendation. In a matter of O 47, that it be without recommendation as amended. In a matter of R 132, 133, 135, 136, and R 137, that they do pass. I move to accept the Finance and Government Committee report.
There's a motion and a second to accept the committee report. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? No. Okay. That passes. Deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Okay, let's see. I have one, actually. I have two, actually. EC 361, the mayor's appointment of Charlene Fox to the Affordable Housing Committee. I move deferral until May 6. I need a vote on this, counselors?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. EC 363, the mayor's appointment of Christopher Ramitas to the Transit Advisory Board. I move deferral until May 6.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Any opposed? No. Okay, very good. And I voted yes. I'm sorry, I said no. Okay, we'll move to item nine. Item nine is the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission, please stand if you are in the audience, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Anybody present that's being appointed? Not tonight. Okay. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, counselors?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are going to move on to final actions. Counselor Davis, R 133, declaring the intent of the city of Albuquerque to issue metropolitan redevelopment bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $21,500,000 in connection with the acquisition and construction of equipping of the Broadstone Nob Hill project. I move a do-pass.
Second.
Is there anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could you support?
All in favor, counselors?
Yes.
Yes. Counselors?
Yes.
Counselor Winter? Counselor Harris, did you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Any opposed? No. Okay. Very good. So we will move on to general public comments. And there are a number of people signed up to speak tonight. There will be a two-minute limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the light will turn yellow, and the bell will ring, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and ring to indicate your time is up. And our first speaker this evening is Don Schrader. And I have to say, Mr. Schrader, I always enjoy listening to you.
Even if Russia wrongly interfered in the 2016 U.S. election, the bloody truth is the United States, for decades, under both Republican and Democrat presidents, has done far worse to over 60 nations. far worse to over 60 nations. The U.S. CIA overthrew the government of Iran in 1953 and installed the brutal Shah. His secret police murdered up to 60,000 Iranians and tortured many more. In 1973, the U.S. helped overthrow the president of Chile, the oldest democracy in Latin America. Then the U.S. helped install the vicious dictator Pinochet, who tortured and murdered thousands in Chile. How would we feel if another nation overthrew our government and installed a dictator who tortured and murdered many of us? If we were most people in the world's smaller nations, would we trust the U.S. government? I want all seven-plus billion people on earth to be treated fairly. Hell no to the U.S. first. I do not pledge allegiance to the U.S. flag or to any nation's flag. The world is my country. All people, all people, are my sisters and brothers.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. I'm just asking if that we please not applaud, because that's one of our council rules, that we don't do that. So, Mr. Serrano, thank you.
Madam Borrego, members of the council, members of the city, we see a spark of death this week, you know, it's sad to hear, you know, we were doing so good, and then suddenly, you know, there's a spark, or a patch of drugs that is too high. I've been telling this, recommending APD to go stronger, and the use of amphetamines, and the cooks of amphetamines, because they control the pH of the drugs, and that's what brings the accidents with the children. If you look at that, you know, you will find that a very optimum, you know, to do. But other than that, I invited all you guys to go to the National Security Conference at UNM. It was this week, it's one event every year. I recommend it for next year. We got the best speakers from Washington. You get a direct line with the directorate in Washington, you know, to put your complaints, because we are the number-one place that can be hit in a national security threat. And the reason I say this is because we have the best minds in UNM, you know, and we direct, you know, a lot of those things. And the reason I say this, too, is because one of the main issues of the conference was what's happening with those childrens in the border? What are we gonna do with the border crisis? And for one thing, we have to be humane. We have to treat these people humanely, and actually, we're thinking and doing Cinco de Mayo celebration, and we invited the 600 children and women that are here, and we want the city to invite more. I'd rather invite women and children now than criminals later, where it gets out of hand. And we have 460 nuclear weapons here, we cannot, you know, we cannot afford to have an accident with a terrorist. But thank you very much, and Mayo Cinco, Cinco de Mayo, come and celebrate with us out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Serrano. J.D. Bullington, Andrew Gunn, and Carl Home, and you can start coming forward if you'd like, and take seats up front. Mr. Bullington, good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, councillors. My name is J.D. Bullington, and I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce regarding proposed ordinance 1948. The chamber certainly supports the protection of the environment, but with respect to this proposed plastic ban ordinance, there are some conclusions within the economic impact analysis that I would like to highlight. First of all, towards the end of the economic analysis, Exhibit A notes that this ordinance will likely increase landfill trash by over 3,000 tons a year, because paper bags are simply 10 times heavier than plastic. So, from a carbon emissions standpoint, the production and use of paper bags is less environmentally friendly than the use of plastic bags, when you consider the emissions that are generated from producing plastic bags and transporting 10 times, 10 times the weight. We know that banning the distribution of plastic bags has increased the purchase of much heavier plastic trash bags in other places, mitigating to a large degree the extent the environmental benefit of this policy. Banning the use of plastic items in Albuquerque businesses, whether it's bags, straws, takeout containers, utensils, or any other item, will increase business costs, and consumers will bear the brunt of this policy through both higher prices and more inconvenience. The chamber believes that there is a better way. Other cities and states have taken other approaches that are aggressive and effective, but they're much less onerous than an outright ban. So, the chamber respectfully requests that other options be considered that are producing positive and the same desired, desired results. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Andrew Gunn?
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, council. This is gonna be rapid-fire, because I have a lot to say, so my apologies in advance. My name is Andrew Gunn, and I speak on behalf of the earth. I'm a freshman at the University of New Mexico, philosophy and theater double major, and a secretary of the UNM Wilderness Alliance. I come tonight to speak in support of the proposed Clean and Green Retail Ordinance. Our natural heritage is one of our most valuable resources, and no price can be put on its worth to our community and visitors from around the world. I'd like to read a few quotes from a column I wrote for the Daily Lobo, the pseudo newspaper, last November, on the detrimental effects of our over-reliance on plastics. We may feel angry in reaction to a National Geographic post on marine life mistaking macroplastics for food, but our collective indignation often ends there. We may hang our heads in shame when we read that plastic in the oceans kills an estimated 100,000 marine mammals each year, only to lose the fire in our hearts when our daily lives provide another distraction. After the United Kingdom began charging five pence per single-use bag in 2015, there's been an estimated 80% decline in their use. As a result of Denmark introducing attacks on plastic bags for retailers in 2003, the country has the lowest usage, usage in Europe at four bags per person per year. This is not a Marxist machination to slowly siphon away our freedoms. Society must evolve and adapt in order to survive, and our collective future is more important than your singular privilege to use a devastating and unnecessary product. The time is long overdue, where we must decide whether our allegiances lie with the unfettered destruction of the natural world and the spurious prospect of unlimited GDP growth, or the environment that prevents our existence, end quote. I urge the councillors to approve this ordinance, which would set an example for the rest of the country in becoming better stewards of this heritage that we've been entrusted with. I understand there are concerns from the business, business community, see the previous speaker, however, the economic impact is negligible in comparison to the environmental damage wrought by petroleum-based plastics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. The next speaker is Carl Home, then it will be Raymond Jimenez and Joan Brown.
Good evening, Madam Vice President, Borrego, and members of the council. My name is Carl Home, and I'm the general manager of the Doubletree. I'm also representing the Greater Albuquerque Innkeepers Association. We have some good news. As the voice of the hospitality industry in central New Mexico, we are happy to share the following. March was a great month for visitations. The conventions booked came in with great attendance and with individual travelers, from snowbirds to families enjoying spring break to baseball, basketball groups. The city was booming. We expect lodger's tax collections to be very strong. April has been off to a great start, with groups like the Society of American Archaeology, who just finished with their attendance at close to 4,000, up from the 2,000 initially committed to come here, from around the country. We will end the month on a high note with internationally-recognized Gathering of Nations, as was noted earlier, 36th year for them. With the senior games coming to Albuquerque in June, it will surely be one of the best months of the year. In addition to the senior competitors and their fans, we will be hosting a variety of groups, from scientists to train collectors to pastel artists. Our association is watching the progress on the short-term rental task force and appreciate the complexities of the issue. Thanks to Counselor Gibson for taking on this important issue. Protecting the use of lodger's tax collections for marketing and promotion is key to our continued success. In case you're not aware, tourism is one of the city's largest private industries. We employ over 40,000 people in Albuquerque. The estimated 6.2 million out-of-town visitors that come in each year generate approximately $69 million in local taxes alone. It is a $2, $2 billion industry, contributing to the vibrancy and the improvement of Albuquerque's economy, and enhances our quality of life for our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Home. Any questions?
Madam Vice President, I just want to say thank you very much for coming down and sharing that. I hope you come every month to let us know what's going on. It's nice to know.
Indeed, we're doing very well as a whole industry this year. 2019 is terrific. 2020 is also now starting to come into focus and is also looking to be another good year. So, thank you all, and thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the tourism in New Mexico. I think the weather's been a little confusing for people lately, because we don't know if we're going skiing or if we're going boating, so we're sort of... So, Raymond Jimenez. Mr. Jimenez? Are you in the audience? Okay, I'll move on to the next person. We will have Joan Brown, Ashley McKenna, and Catherine Gonzalez.
Good evening, and thank you, councillors. My name is Joan Brown. I'm a Franciscan sister and executive director of New Mexico Interfaith Power and Light, and we're here to speak in support of 48, Bill 48, regarding the one-use plastics, et cetera. We believe that this needs to be done now, and it shouldn't wait. We keep pushing many things off in our culture, in our society as a world, and we keep getting into worse and worse situations, and that is what is going to cost us more economically. It is also the moral imperative that we need to ask to work on this. A number of our faith communities, our congregations, have already been working on this for many years. The Methodist women had a whole proposal that they put forth several years ago and passed, and they've been working in their churches. We also have a moral responsibility to care for the future generations and our children, and we really need to be listening to them and their wisdom at this point. I also think that this would be very good for the city in terms of, we keep saying that we want to be a kinder, more compassionate city, and this is a step towards that, because it calls us all to more mindfulness of what kind of things we're using, how we use them. A greater respect for the items in our lives means a greater respect for one another. Pope Francis has talked about the throwaway culture, and this is a huge piece of the throwaway culture. And if we mindlessly throw away, you know, whether it's paper, or food, or whatever, we begin then to treat one another that way as well. So, I think that this would be beneficial for all of us, all the way around, and truly support this effort, and so grateful that it has come before us. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Ashley McKenna?
Hello, Vice President Borrego and members of the council. I just want to express my heartfelt gratitude to all of you for listening to our request to ban single-use plastic bags. Before I started this process, I had no idea who my city council officer was. Thankfully, it's Mr. Benton in the North Valley, and you responded to our request with great enthusiasm. I have heard hundreds of people come up to me through this process who had no idea who their council officer was, and so we've looked it up. We've gotten so many people engaged in this process, and so now the city of Albuquerque has woken up to really being engaged and having their voices heard. So, today, I'd like you to urge, I'd like to urge you to fully vote for the ordinance in its entirety. I know that Styrofoam has come up numerous times, and we'd like to give an exemption to the Restaurant Association, but what I'd really like to push is the physical impact of Styrofoam. Styrofoam holds the chemicals styrene and benzene, and anytime we put hot food into those containers, the breakdown process starts. Those gases go right into our food, and it goes right into our bloodstream. I'm not willing to sacrifice our health for a few pennies, and so I'm not willing to give that to my son, to my friends and family, or to anyone that I know. So, I would just like to say we're here, we're not going away, and this is a one-berkay approach.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenna. So, the next order will be Catherine Gonzalez, Olivia Gonzalez, and Tad Naminsky. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Vice President, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a teacher, a mom, and an Albuquerque resident, and I would like to ask you each to support the proposed ordinance O 48, limiting single-use plastics within our city. As we all know or have learned over the past few months, I've learned a lot, plastics are more than an eyesore littering our streets and neighborhoods. As is so often the case, what we should be fearing most is not what we can see, but what we cannot. When plastic breaks down, as it does very quickly in our hot sunny climate, it doesn't just disappear, but instead becomes microplastic. Microplastic particles then remain in our soil, our air, and our water for hundreds and even thousands of years. There was an article published just today in the journal Nature, a scientific journal, that looks at how these microplastics actually travel great distances in the air. Researchers found that microplastic particles had traveled to very remote and pristine locations in the French Pyrenees Mountains. Apparently, these microplastics are not only entering our food chain via the soil and water, but we are breathing them in as well. As microplastics accumulate in our environment, we can only imagine the adverse effects they will have on human health, and this is an area that is just beginning to be studied. I'm sorry. This is not a political issue, it's a real problem that affects us all. As it is written, the proposed ordinance limits single-use bags, straws, and Styrofoam takeout containers. It does not mention utensils, so I want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. I think there's been some misinformation to try to scare people away. 20 years from now, looking back on this issue, the correct course of action is clear. Please keep that in mind when you proceed to a vote, and keep our children in mind and their future. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Olivia Gonzalez?
When I was five years old, my parents took me to California for the first time. I remember the long drive and being so excited to get there. I had heard about running into the cold water and building sandcastles on the beach. With my toy bucket and shovel in hand, I got out of the car and ran to the sand, but the most vivid memory I have of this experience was when I fell to my knees, grabbed a handful of sand in each hand, and opened them to find small pieces of white plastic spread throughout. In the year 2519, the Styrofoam cup you used this morning will still exist, along with the 25 billion that will be used in the U.S. this year alone. In the year 2119, the plastic bags you used for your groceries this weekend will be broken down into little pieces, continuing to kill the small amount of animals that will still exist then. You will be gone, and so will I, but the evidence of how we polluted our beautiful earth will still be there. The trees will be gone, and we will say, "I wish I could have done more," but we can do more. People have told me that my generation is the ones that need to fix everything, but why can't we start now? If you give us that simple head start, maybe we can do something that will make sure I can live a full life, that I will be able to have kids, and my children can live full lives. By continuing to use plastic this way, you're telling my generation that our future doesn't matter as much as yours, that we have to start from the bottom in order to make a difference, because it's too difficult for us to start right now. People have told me that one person, or one community, or one city won't make a difference in this growing problem, but that's how change starts, with me, you, and a simple idea that change is possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Tad Naminsky? Mr. Naminsky, you're next. And then we will have Lauren Scott, Brian Gillespie, Marian Mendez Pereira. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tad Naminsky. This is public comments, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What caught my eye, really touched me, when I asked Google, "Google, would you tell me about Poland, last 20 years in Poland?" And NATO? Well, I got answered. 1999, Poland said goodbye to Russia, and decided to go with NATO. So, United States sent 300 troops to Poland, between Poland and Russia, boarding. Now, 20 years later, we, in Poland, we have our troops, 3,500 division. Not only that, we have also in Poland, international battalion of... Not only that, we have also in Poland international battalion of many countries and under dealership of Polish general and United States general. Well, what got to me thinking, why don't we send our troops to southern border here in the United States? That would make a lot of sense because our troops has to go all over the world, not protecting our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Naminski. Lauren Scott?
Hi, good evening. My name is Lauren, and I'm a first-grade teacher here in Albuquerque. I'm here to speak on the paid sick leave ordinance. I want to open by saying that I believe every employee in Albuquerque deserves to earn paid sick leave. I think that everyone, including employees of small businesses, deserve to accrue paid sick leave. As a teacher, I know that paid sick leave will benefit families. My experience has been with grandparents in my classroom taking care of children. When the grandchildren get sick, the grandparents have to... Have had to leave their work or find other people to take care of them. I have had grandparents have to leave their job so that they can become a full-time caretaker at the expense of their employment. It is challenging for families to find childcare at the last minute, and in my experience, these families are really dedicated to both their job and also making sure their child stays healthy. We need a policy in place that protects our future, our children, and benefits business. With an effective earned sick leave ordinance in place, families can both work to support their family and care for them. An effective ordinance is good for businesses because there will be less turnover, which will decrease training costs. Having this policy that applies to small and large businesses is good for Albuquerque and for families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Brian Gillespie? And then it will be Marian Mendez-Pereira and Pablo... Is it Harris?
Hi, thank you. My name is Brian Gillespie. I'm an educator here in Albuquerque. I want to share an anecdote about the cost of unpaid sick leave, specifically the cost to the community when people have to work sick or cannot stay at home to care for sick relatives. I taught first and second grade for a few years and had a robust leave policy. Thankfully, in the years I taught, I only ever suffered from seasonal allergies, and I didn't have anyone at home who needed care from me. I'm grateful I had the policy in any case. My class was intense. We had many students with intense needs. I had a class of 22 that felt like 32. I leaned heavily on my educational assistant through those years to help all our students receive the best support we could give them. She was an incredible woman who helped our students in a thousand ways daily. My unpaid sick leave anecdote isn't too complicated. My assistant could take paid leave. She had a policy identical to mine, but her husband could not. As a result, when her daughter was sick, it was my assistant who stayed home to care for her daughter, not by preference, but by economic necessity. Sometimes a sub would fill in for her physically, but very, very few subs provided effective support in the room, knew the students, or helped to maintain a smooth atmosphere in the class, and the quality of instruction I was able to provide my students was diminished. Her husband was a manager at a local restaurant, and as I understand the situation, he was deliberately kept below 40 hours so that the employer did not have to provide him with the benefits of full-time employees, including any form of paid sick leave. As a result, he would work sick or would not be available to care for their sick child. I see this as an injustice because there's a cost to businesses choosing not to provide paid sick leave, and it falls on people with the fewest options. It falls on the community. I don't want my point of view to be misconstrued. I don't think employers should pay the cost of sick leave. I think employees should have the right to earn those hours. I think it's unjust that in our city, a man like my assistant's husband would have to work sick or not be able to stay home to care for his child because the employer was gaming his hours and that the eventual cost of the circumstance would fall on my students. This is just one anecdote.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Marian Mend... Marian Mendez-Pereira?
Madam Vice President and members of the council, my name is Marian Mendez-Serra.
Oh, hi.
No worries.
I'm sorry.
No worries. I'm an organizer with El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos, an immigrant rights and workers justice organization. We have over 4,600 members, and we work... Would work hardworking New Mexicans, and they deserve to be paid fully for every hour they work. Today, we are joined by low-wage workers that have been victims of wage theft, which is a rampant problem in our city. Employers can steal wages in many ways, not paying overtime, not paying the minimum wage, having employees work off the clock, stealing tips, misclassification, or simply not paying at all. We stand here today to send a message that wage theft has no place in Albuquerque and the urge of Albuquerque to resource ambiguously and enforce Albuquerque minimum wage laws. Wage theft plunges more New Mexican families into poverty and puts ethical businesses who follow the law at a competitive disadvantage. In addition to the wages workers earn through their hard work should be flowing back into our local economy. In 2017, El Centro, along with other... With worker rights groups, filed a lawsuit against the Department of Workforce Solution under Martinez administration for not adequately enforcing the state minimum wage. In December of that same year, we reached a settlement. However, there is currently a backlog of approximately 2,000 cases. Families who live in paycheck to paycheck do not have the luxury of waiting. Over the past year, we have met with members of the Keller administration and the council and have been encouraged by the openness of discussing a path towards... Forwards. But we must ensure minimum wage enforcement is built into the fiscal year of 2019-2020 budget. We are proud of the contributions of low-wage workers, and our government should serve hardworking families by ensuring that people are paid fairly for the work that they are owed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Pablo... And it looks like Lares or... I'm sorry. I can't read it. Is it L.A.R.E.S.? Your name, sir?
Pablo Lasalle.
Lasalle. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Pablo Lasalle, and I am a former Matuches employee. I was working at Matuches over 60 to 80 hours a week, but was not being paid overtime. This continued until I was offered a position as a sous chef at a new Matuches location in Rio Rancho. After they changed my position at Matuches, I was also in charge of other employees. I saw that others were also not being paid overtime. I saw a woman asked to take some time off, but was told she needed 20 extra hours to make up for that time off. As a manager, I didn't want to enforce these mob practice and felt guilty that they, like me, were working nonstop, breaking their backs for the restaurant, while missing precious time away from the families. After a year at Matuches, I finally had enough and decided to speak up in behalf of my coworkers and myself. Some of the workers impacted, and I formed a committee under the name Cosineros Unidos in good faith to improve working conditions in Matuches since we were classified erroneously and not paid overtime for work performed. I hope workers who are currently facing wage theft can learn from my situation and speak up when this is being done. We should not allow wage theft an statement of workers. Businesses can do what they please to their employees. There are laws in place that they must follow, laws that we need to strengthen so that workers can come forward and stop being afraid to report employees are stealing their wages and get the justice they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dalia Hernandez, and then Art Tannenbaum and Elizabeth Venselli. Ms. Hernandez?
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and member of the council. My name is Ilaria Martinez, and I'm going to read on name of Dalia Hernandez. My name is Dalia Hernandez, and I'm part of El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos, and I am here representing Taqueria Mexico. Today, more than ever, I'm here to support low-wage workers in their fight against wage theft, a chronic problem that continues to grow in our city and has a detrimental impact on all New Mexican families. We at Taqueria Mexico are a very united and hard-working family, and thanks to our efforts, we have managed to build a small food business. And we have been contributing to the state of New Mexico for more than 26 years. Many small businesses like us also have mixed-status families that own small businesses that struggle day after day, year after year, to achieve their dreams. Unfortunately, there are also businesses that do not comply with minimum wage laws. And both other businesses that do comply with these laws are at a competitive disadvantage. Employers who do not do this and instead cheat workers and their compensation and create an unfair playing field for the rest of the companies who pay by the rules. The wage earned by workers through their hard work should be returning to our local economy. However, when employers refuse to pay their employees, they prevent workers from investing their money in our local economy, and thus further sinks New Mexican families into poverty. We really hope the city of Albuquerque will strengthen the process to enforce minimum wage laws so that workers can obtain the justice they deserve. On behalf of Taqueria Mexico, small business owners, and our families, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The next person to speak is Art Tannenbaum? Good evening, Mr. Tannenbaum.
Good evening. The Police Oversight Agency conducted an investigation that determined there were repeated violations of overtime policy by numerous police department employees. And the recommendations of the Oversight Agency are that the overtime be... That the overtime... That there's more supervision. One of the officers supervisor was involved, and the Oversight Agency recommended that the department begin to monitor the officers working overtime to see if there are any irregular activities in that regard, and also to monitor the officers who are routinely working so much overtime that their compensation exceeds the compensation of many executives in city government. So, obviously, there's a lack of supervision in the department and in the government pertaining to the department. Those recommendations sound good to me. There were two reports in the Albuquerque Journal Friday and Saturday. The union leader, Sean Willoughby, had plenty to say about this. He said that the police officer concerned deserved every dollar. I don't know about that because regardless of the repeated policy violations. Also, the union... Sean said that Simon is doing a job in the department that nobody else wants to do. I don't know what that means. But if there's anyone at fault, it's people in supervisory positions. And I would even go so far as to blame the council because you habitually suspend the rules, break the rules, work your way around the rules, and you're not setting a very good example. But I hope that the Oversight Agency's recommendations will be followed, or at least used as a reasonable guideline.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum. Next person is Elizabeth Vensel.
Yes.
Good evening.
My name is Elizabeth Vensel. I'm an attorney in Albuquerque. I own my own business. I'm also on the board of two neighborhood associations in my area, and I started a group of businesses along the central east Nob Hill Highland area. I'm here to speak in opposition to 01948 in answer to Counselor Gibson's question about how did these children get involved? I think they're doing a great job of portraying their views. This is the age where schools require students to get involved with some kind of community, something bigger than their own family. As a former Cub Scout leader, I also did the same thing. We had to pick something to be concerned about in the environment. We picked the lobo. My Cub Scout den picked the lobo, wolf. The issue that everyone is trying to address is the dumping of garbage into the ocean, which puts plastic washing up into areas where animals, sea animals, get it into their bodies. And it's good to reach out for something. It's good to set a goal. And obviously, Albuquerque can't do anything about New York or L.A. dumping their garbage into the ocean. So, the next thing would be to look at trying to stop the use of plastics here. However, we are not the people who drop the plastic. We are not the people who get the plastic all over the place. There are a lot of people who just drop things anywhere and leave it for us to pick up. I believe the city should spearhead plastic recycling. It would meet a market need, would utilize university resources, set a precedent nationwide, create jobs. The city council and the city of Albuquerque should stop punishing businesses. The city uses plastic bags for landfill. We are not the problem.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your time. Okay, so with that, those are the final public comments this evening, and we will move on to our announcements. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, April 18th at 5:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. Looking for my... Here it is. I have my script here. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, April 22nd at 5:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Jones, thank you. There will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, April 25th, and Thursday, May 2nd at 5:00 p.m. in the Vincenec-Griego chambers. There will be a Mesa del Sol Tax Increment Development District Board of Directors meeting on Thursday, May 2nd at 1:00 p.m. in the council committee room on the ninth floor. Counselor Gibson?
Thank you. There will be a Winrock Tax Increment Development District Board of Directors meeting on Thursday, May 2nd at 1:45 in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Thank you. Okay, so those are the last of our announcements. We are going to move on to our public hearing. And after our public hearing, for the public's knowledge, I think that we have a recess. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So, our public hearing this evening is AC 19-1. William Sabatini appeals the zoning hearing examiner's decision. And Mr. Chris Melanderis from our staff, our staff attorney, will explain the appeal. I'm going to just read very quickly into the record. All presenters other than attorneys must be sworn in. The parties are allowed to cross-examine one another. All those who will testify, please stand and raise your right hand. Everyone that's testifying in this appeal, please stand and raise your right hand. Let's see. Hold on a second. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And for the public's knowledge, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Time limits for presenters are as follows. Eight minutes for presentation from our appellant, William Sabatini. Ten minutes for presentation from appellees, Sean Bizar... Bizar? Richard Saylor. Three minutes, presentation by or response to questions by city planning staff. Two minutes rebuttal by appellant, William Sabatini, if any. And then we will have deliberation discussion amongst our councilors. So, we're going to go to presentation from appellant, William Sabatini. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Madam Vice President and councilors. First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to come and speak tonight. And I'd like to make a special thank you to Counselor Benton, who motioned for this to occur, and we're delighted that we have an opportunity here. My name is William Sabatini. Many of you know me as a friend and as an architect locally, but I'm here tonight, not in either capacity, but more as a resident of the Stronghurst neighborhood, which you know is very near here on Candelaria and roughly Edith Northeast. I just wanted to say very quickly, I've been... I just wanted to say very quickly, I've been a resident in Albuquerque almost 50 years. I left for a while and came back. I came back on purpose. I loved it here. I made a conscious decision to move my family and open a business in Albuquerque, and I'm here. It's my home. I'll be here until I'm gone. So this is very, I'm taking this as a very important matter for me. But it's not a personal issue. This is not about me. It's not about one individual. It's not about the developer. And it's also not a comment on the used car or car sales business. It is not. That is a legitimate business that can occur, should have its place in the city. This is purely a land use matter. This is about whether a used car lot should be developed on a corner of the Stronghurst neighborhood that is immediately adjacent to our one property, residential property owned by single individuals. That is the rub that we have with this. We can speak about how we feel about in the neighborhood in general, but that's our primary issue at stake here. I just want to make a very brief point about how we approach this. We approached this fairly naively and ignorantly, if I might say, assuming that if we went to the comprehensive plan and the IDO and what it states about their primary purpose, the IDO being specific about protecting the character and quality of our residential neighborhoods, I thought this would be an easy thing to argue. But you know, we were rejected by two bodies, and I have to admit, in looking at that, they did the right thing. That ruling was correct because they have no discretion. You do. They are there to interpret the exact wording of the ordinance, and they did. So we're here tonight, and I would like to just appeal to you with some points that we'd like to make. First of all, I was involved in working up this comprehensive plan as a student years ago. Never did anything of any importance, but I was involved and I know what the purpose of it was and how it organized and what it was meant to do. It's purely about the quality of life in Albuquerque. It's there to improve that. And if you take the IDO, which is the document that implements those policies expressed in the comprehensive plan, one important fact or purpose is listed there, and it says to protect the quality and character of the residential neighborhoods. Now, we took that to mean that maybe we had a case to come before them and argue that. Well, it didn't work. But I'd like to make some quick points to you. We learned some things as we went through the process. First of all, the whole idea of conditions, the conditional use. What are the conditions? It's landscaping, it's buffers, it's improvements to the property. And I'm here to tell you as a design professional in this community that the word buffer is a word, just a word. It doesn't work. Fifty feet of distance with a line of trees doesn't provide the proper separation between a business, any business almost, certainly a car business, and an adjacent piece of property. So I say that is a misnomer to start with. Secondly, one of the points made to us was that this would qualify as neighborhood shopping, neighborhood convenience shopping. So I want you all to imagine yourself, as I try to, telling my wife, hey, honey, I'm going to go down the street to the corner and buy a car. Anything else you need? How absurd is that? It's patronizing in some ways. Property values. One of the things that states in the IDO and the comprehensive plan, the phrase material effect. Now, can't tell me a used car lot adjacent to a residential property does not have a material effect on the value of that property. A neighbor, Mr. Ortega, has one of the homes just south of this proposed development, has had that house on the market for eight months. He has had no offers, and the word he's getting is that nobody wants to buy that house next to a proposed car lot. The image of it, do you think that the conditions, if they are implemented as required by the code, would change the image of this place favorably? Physical design is not going to change it. You've got a line of cars. You have maybe trees that are placed in between that won't mature, by the way, for, not in my lifetime. So the issue of image, I asked all of you in my initial written document to you, ask yourself the question, do you want a car lot adjacent to your house? That answer is important. The whole issue of area of consistency, which is also in the code, I don't understand that yet. Still, no one's been able to explain it to me. I think it might mean that all the development where we live is so bad that a car lot is just as consistent with that. It has nothing to do with quality to me. And then the most compelling point I would like to make to you, because we all like to go to precedents, I know the legal community immediately goes to that. The Downtown Neighborhood Association, which was established many years ago, similar to the Stronghurst neighborhood, established in 1926, that area went under a huge redevelopment in the 70s because it was a great place. And they worked. Those people were very active. I had many friends there. They were very active. And they were able to get into the zoning ordinance that a car lot, a car sales lot, was prohibited within their neighborhood. And I submit to you that the Stronghurst neighborhood, which I believe is of equal quality, when you look at the architecture and the homes there, is just as qualified to get that consideration and should be. The only reason we don't have our historic designation, the pedigree, if I might use the word, is because there hasn't been a plan done, an area plan done for that area, which I believe will happen. And I think as that's taken on, you'll find that allowing a conditional use such as a car lot adjacent to a residential property would be wrong. One quick thing, the comprehensive plan is a great thing and is the IDO. We don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We're asking you for one specific thing, and that is add a phrase to the conditional use that says, you may have a car lot in the MXL zone, but not adjacent to a residential property.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatini.
Thank you.
Any questions from the counselors? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And Mr. Sabatini, thank you for that presentation. I think you summed it up very well, and I think you articulated to me, and I appreciate your recognition of the process and the rules that we get here. There's a segment, I think you hit on a little bit, but one of the considerations for us is whether this conditional use would, we could permit it if it would not, quote, be materially adverse to the surrounding neighborhood. Can you tell me, based on your experience in these hearings, sort of what type of activities at the car lot in particular are offensive or that the neighborhood feels are injurious? And let me preface that by saying, I think it's clear that folks have been trying to develop, based on the record, folks have been trying to develop this lot for some time. It is available for commercial use, but I think there is a difference between, in my opinion, there's a difference between an indoor office environment and an outdoor business activity. But I haven't heard you specifically articulate what types of activities at a used car lot might be offensive to the neighborhood.
Well, we've been told there won't be any repair. We've been told there'll be little to no noise, and we've been told that the hours of operation would be, as the conditions require, between eight and six. All those things are good, but I still go back to a very subjective, if I may say. I can't think of anything objective to bring to the table, other than the property value thing. That's very clear to me. But it's the image of a used car lot. It's inescapable. Nobody wants to be near a used car lot. I'm sorry. And so on that basis alone, that's what we're asking. We're asking to be, that to be recognized here as something tangible.
Right.
It's as simple as that, counselor.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Can we go back to Mr. Melendris, and you can just talk a little bit about the technical aspects of this case?
Sure, Madam Vice President, counsel. So the matter that you're hearing, the question before you is whether or not a automobile sales use should be conditionally permitted at Edith and Candelaria. This went before the zoning hearing examiner who approved that request. The council referred it to its land use hearing officer, and the city council rejected the recommendation of its land use hearing officer in favor of hearing from the parties here today. This conditional use permit process requires the satisfaction of six criteria, that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it complies with all applicable provisions of the Integrated Development Ordinance, that it will not create significant adverse impacts on adjacent properties, the surrounding neighborhood, or the larger community, that it will not create material adverse impacts on other land in the surrounding area through things like increases in traffic congestion, parking congestion, noise, vibration. And if those things do happen, that there would be sufficient mitigation of those, and that it will not increase non-residential activity within 300 feet of any residential zone between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 PM. The entirety of this lot would be within that 300 feet, so that criteria would apply to the full lot. And it will not negatively impact pedestrian or transit connectivity without appropriate mitigation. So those are the six criteria, and we've heard Mr. Sabatini touch on some of those. The council today will make a determination as to whether or not it thinks that the conditional use should be approved or not. And in the event that we make a decision tonight, we should make a decision tonight, your staff will prepare findings for you to consider for adoption at a subsequent meeting.
And Mr. Melendris, we cannot consider any new information this evening. Is that correct?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, counsel, that is correct. The rules have changed a little bit. This is actually one of the first appeals that we've had a full hearing on under the IDO. And the IDO does completely limit new evidence at this particular hearing. In the past, the council would be able to vote on that type of thing, but the last opportunity for new evidence in this process now is at the Lajo hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so our next presenter will be from the appellee, Sean Bizar, Richard Saylor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, counselors. My name is Sean Bizar. I'm at the SBS Construction and Engineering. And Mr. Sabatini was living here. I came from another country. I've been here 30 years. And actually, this site is for my own use. I am consultant. I've been consultant for many years, and I have a dealer license and operate on salt roadways, but the state of New Mexico requires you to have an office to do sales of the cars in the location. You cannot, and I don't have time to travel all the way to salt roadway. So, Mr. Saylor, I do a lot of work for him. He says, why don't you use this site? Now, let me tell you one thing. The comprehensive plan, you guys approved it. This is MLX zone, and MXL zone, you can do a lot of stuff that you wouldn't be standing here. You can do car wash. You can do motel and hotel. We don't need, we do not need your permits. So we are not asking really something different. Mr. Sabatini says car dealership. The way he mentions car dealership, like they're killing somebody in that location. I mean, this is somebody you need car, you go by there. You're going to improve the area of, you're going to build a nice fencing, landscaping, new building, you know? The neighborhood actually is like 80, 90 years old. There are not really nice architectural features existing there. These are really old.
Excuse me, please refrain from-
Sorry, I apologize.
Extra curricular comments.
This site has been used by homeless people for many years. And, you know, the car dealership is going to be, you know, maybe 20, 30 cars. You will have 20, maybe maximum people coming and going during the day, but I doubt it. And if you put even a restaurant or drive-through, you will have 100 cars. You will have a lot of traffic. So basically, what we are doing is just following the zoning, and you guys approved the IDL. And then if you guys want to, they want to pick and choose that this only location, don't approve, everybody else is okay, you know? I mean, I don't know if it will work or not. And Mr.-
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments that were actually in the record from before and just reiterate a few points. That property's been zoned commercial. We acquired-
Excuse me, sir. Before you make that statement, I just realized that I'm going to have to recuse myself for business purposes from this hearing. Thank you. Mr. Sanchez will take over.
What just happened?
Yes.
Go ahead and proceed.
We acquired the property in 2000 from Mr. Brunascini, who actually was tragically killed in a plane accident. Their family had owned that for a number of years prior to that. That property's been zoned commercial for many, many years. We acquired it as a commercial property, and we have had a number of different possibilities to develop it. We've had difficulties with that because homeless people were camping there, leaving needles behind, all kinds of problems, whiskey bottles. We finally fenced it. We continually try and cut the weeds and keep it nice for the neighborhood until we can find a viable plan to develop it. Mr. Sabatini has tried to make the point that it was going to diminish property values, but presented zero evidence of that assertion. And he also says it's going to create more traffic through the neighborhood, but why it's a high-traffic corner, the most accessible place you can enter, is on the corner? It'll have driveways on both frontages. Now, why would anybody drive through their neighborhood to get to this property? I just don't understand the logic in that. And the last thing is, right across the street, they're doing car and truck sales, right across the street, a much larger car and truck sales property than this one. There's a high-traffic gas station catty corner from it. Jane's Corporation is on the other corner. There are a lot of high-traffic businesses right around this, and I think the objection is that it is adjacent to residential zoning. However, everyone in that neighborhood knew that property was zoned commercial when they bought their homes, unless they bought them 50 years ago. And it has been commercial for a very long time. And it has, if the city wants to take it and turn it into a park or some use like that, I'm open to offers and we'll look at something else. And the last point is, the primary use for this property is actually an office building that will house his dealer license, and most of his sales occur on the internet where many times the people see the cars and make offers on them before they ever even come to the property. The main purpose of the property is so they can come there and do the paperwork to comply with state law as far as owning a motor vehicle sales permit. And I've been in the car business, and I know what the rules are. And they need a location that has a desk and is secured so that when a vehicle is shown or delivered, it has to be a motor vehicle approved site. And they come out, they inspect the lot, they have a lot of criteria for it, and Mr. Bizar has just bent over backwards trying to, he met with the neighborhood associations, he's willing to shield it with trees, put up lighting that won't be obtrusive on the neighborhood. He's done everything he could to make everybody there happy to develop a legitimate property that is commercially zoned and has gone through the process. We've had hearing after hearing after hearing, and under the rules, we comply, it appears. And I respectfully ask you to approve Mr. Bizar's development plan, and he wants to do something very nice that the community can be proud of. And it's, you know, how big a car sales lot can you have on less than a half an acre? It's not like you're going to have 300 cars there. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your time. Next, let's go to our staff for a presentation or responses to questions by city planning staff. Who's going to be responding for the city? Mr. Brito? You have three minutes. Go ahead and proceed.
President Protem Sanchez, I have nothing to respond to, but I am available for questions from the council.
Counselor Gibson, then Counselor Harris, then Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. So a couple of just real basic things I just want to make sure that we're really, really clear on. This, the issues that we're dealing with today, would this have been any different pre-IDO if we were doing this a few years ago? I mean, has the comprehensive plan or the IDO changed any of the outcomes so far, the decisions that have been made, or, you know, anything related to this case?
President Protem Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, the criteria for review of a conditional use- use request remain largely unchanged from the previous zoning code and were carried over into the integrated development ordinance. Some of the adjustments that were made were in criteria D, which talks about creating adverse impacts without sufficient mitigation or civic or environmental benefits that outweigh the expected impacts. In this case, we've heard the concern about cut-through traffic on a very adjacent nearby residential street that goes through the neighborhood currently, and the concern that cut-through traffic would increase with an active automobile-oriented use on the corner, concerns about, of course, traffic pollution, light spillover, and then, of course, noise. The integrated development ordinance was drafted to have built-in buffers and transitions that include distant separations, landscape buffers, et cetera, but with a conditional use, it's up to the decision-making body to determine whether the built-in requirements of the IDO are enough to mitigate those potential adverse impacts.
Thank you. And if I may—
Go ahead and proceed, Counselor Gibson.
One follow-up to that. So, did the land, the uses, the potential uses for that piece of property change pre-IDO to now?
My recollection is that the previous zoning, which was C1, neighborhood commercial, allowed the use conditionally, and the current zoning, mixed-use, low-intensity, allows the use conditionally.
Okay. So, just one last question for you, Mr. Brito. I was looking at the conditional uses in the packet versus the permissive uses. Conditional uses that were presented included a gas station and car sales lot, and then a permissive use would be a car wash or auto repair. It seems, it seems like a gas station, I mean, if you're looking at number of cars, added traffic in and out of that business, a gas station would be much higher than a car sales lot, for example, you know? And it just seemed unusual to me that that gas station was placed as, or called a conditional use rather than a permissive use, where a car wash and even arguably an auto repair would have probably lower numbers of cars coming and going. So, that just seemed a little bit arbitrary. And, Mr. Sabatini asked the question, would you want to live next to a sales car lot? I almost do. Not too far, anyway. But I, you know, if I'm just thinking about traffic, it seems to me that that would be less invasive, or, you know, bother me less than perhaps a gas station or a car wash, and gas station, of course, is a conditional use. So, I don't know if there's even a question in there, but, well, okay, so let me put it as a question, then. Are those uses, do they consider cars, traffic in and out when they, when planning figures out whether a land use is conditional versus permissive? Is that one of the criteria that's considered?
Yes. The frequency or the demand for automobile access to a site is, was one of the factors that was considered when the lists of permissive and conditional uses were created. A lot of it were carryovers from the previous zoning code, and the final list, of course, was influenced through the review and adoption process as it went through the Planning Commission and in front of this body, the city council. But, things change, perspectives change, and that's one of the reasons that the integrated development ordinance has a built-in requirement that there be an annual update every year, where these kinds of issues can be considered outside of the hearing process, of course, as new outcomes are seen and new instances of adjacent uses are shown to be either compatible or incompatible as they are utilized and the IDO is implemented. But, as the code stands today, the auto sales use is conditional in the existing zoning. The conditions mean that has to meet the criteria. It's not automatic. You have to show that the criteria are met, and the zoning hearing examiner has the opportunity to place conditions on any approval that could be related to design, site layout, access, et cetera, to make sure that it does implement the purpose of the integrated development ordinance, and so that is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the policy document.
Counselor Harris, and then Counselor Benton.
Thank you, and I'm also cognizant, sometimes as people might be watching this on TV, so just want to point out, so this is on the southwest corner of Edith and Candelaria, is that correct?
President Protam Sanchez and Counselor Harris, you are correct.
Okay, and I'm looking at an aerial, which anyone can do on Google Earth, and, I mean, there does seem to be, I can see how people are concerned that it's right next to these residential lots, but that area of town is kind of a mix of all kinds of different stuff. It's what kind of makes it very unique and very eclectic, but if you just look, I mean, right across the street, it looks like there's the Jane's Corporation catty-corner, there's a Chevron about less than 100 yards north of that, there's Harold's Body Repair—
Madam President, I mean, sorry, Madam Chair.
—starters and alternates of Mexico, so—
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Harris, so, to the extent that you're referring to stuff on the aerial, there are aerials depicted in the record, but they're relatively proximate to that actual corner, so the uses beyond that have not been analyzed by the below decision-makers, so I would urge that you kind of limit to that actual corner, which is actually depicted in the aerial in the record.
Okay. Well, but at the same time, remember, there's such thing as judicial notice, and, I mean, we're not allowed to look at a map up here?
Mr. Chair, Counselor Harris, I'd recommend that you limit your sort of analysis to the stuff that's in the record depicted in the aerial.
Okay, I disagree, but okay, I'll do what my lawyer says. So, in any event, even with the aerial on the record, it's clear that, to me, that this is an area that, as is known, is in the North Valley, it's in that area where things are kind of a little bit eclectic, and I think that, under these circumstances, I think that the city did the right thing and allowed this land to be developed, and we heard testimony from the owner that—
Mr. Chair, I object to this line of questioning. I mean, we're not talking about the context, the general context of the North Valley here. We're talking about a specific property.
I think it's a special use permit. That's exactly what we're talking about, Counselor. A conditional use, that's exactly what it is.
You're talking about the character of the larger area, and that's not what we're hearing tonight. We're talking about an immediate adjacency of one use to another.
That is in the record. Counselor Harris, proceed.
Well, I just wanted, I think that that's the comment I wanted to make in terms of the conditional use. I think you do look at the surrounding, necessarily the area, but certainly that corner, and that corner is eclectic in and of itself.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Brito, as I understand it, the specific, there's one change in the conditional use requirements for consideration to approve a conditional use, which was the expansion of that, the expansion of D, which was where the additional language was added about sufficient mitigation and so forth, to the, to the requirements for considering a conditional use. But, the designation of this particular use of auto sales as a conditional use was carried over from zoning code. We don't know how that decision was made way back when, but that was carried over directly, as were many provisions when we, when we created the IDO. Is that, is that pretty much—
Yes, Mr. Chair, Counselor Benton, that's correct.
So, someone at some time before the IDO, in the old zoning code, determined that this particular use was different from the other automobile-oriented uses that were described. Somebody decided that, and that's what's on our books, and that's what's before us today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brito. Next, we will have the appellant, William Sabatini. He has two minutes for rebuttal. Go ahead and proceed.
First, thank you, Mr. President and Counselors. Counselor Harris, I'd like to direct my first point to you, which is that if we follow the line of reasoning that you just illustrated there, nothing would improve. What we're trying to do here is to create a place where a neighborhood, an area, that has potential that improves. You can look at that whole north Fourth Street corridor and Second Street corridor and other corridors heading north and south, they need a lot of help. This was the heart of the city, and there's really nothing wrong with, not to use your word eclectic, because that's being too polite. It is a mixed area. It's, there are good and there are bad things that are happening there. Even our neighborhood has bad edges to it, but we are trying to make that better. And I, what we're here to do today is appeal to you to reject the development that will not bring us forward, it'll push us backwards, and further jeopardize the ability of this whole area to improve and get better, which is vital to everybody's interest. That's pretty much what I want to say. I did lose my train of thought, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your time. We are now—
Help us. I beg your pardon, Counselor, I'm sorry. I'm asking you to help us. The Edith corridor, if you drive north on Edith, it turns into something amazing. It is the El Camino Real, if you, those who don't know. That is the original route, and there are some great things that happened, certainly north of Griegos or north of Montano, but there's been all school along that corridor, and there's also a development to the south of where we are, a nice, well-done industrial building, and that's what we're looking for, mixed-use development.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatini. Your time has expired. We will open up the floor for deliberation and discussion among the counselors. Are there any comments or questions from this council? Counselor Benton?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that concern me about this decision and the Lujo's, the original decision of the ZHE and the Lujo's findings. First of all, the Lujo uses the language conditionally-permissive, which I found somewhat odd. I mean, I think the idea of a conditional use is that it's conditional, so that may be a term of art. I'll ask Mr. Melendres if he'd correct me on that, but the term conditionally-permissive seemed odd. Anyway, I do not believe that the ZHE determined that this was consistent with the comp plan and that it complied with all the applicable provisions of the IDO, including use-specific standards. If you look at the record on page 50, which was the site plan that was submitted by the applicant originally to the UHO, or to the, excuse me, to the ZHE, that site plan does not include the buffers that are required for a couple of things, from the use in general, which Mr. Sabatini was talking about, of creating a 15-foot buffer from the site to residential properties, but also, they were showing the positioning of the vehicles on that site plan, which, if I understand it correctly, should be kept 50 feet from any residentially-zoned property. So, there is just a couple of things, just right off the bat, that concern me. If that's the plan that was, that was reviewed by the ZHE, I disagree, I can't agree with the Lujo, that it was demonstrated that this plan was complying with all applicable provisions, just on those two buffering requirements alone, and I think an argument can be made that there are some significant impacts on adjacent properties. Also, the ZHE did not, did not create conditions. They, ZHE basically made a long list of findings and next to no conditions, other than some very general condition about, about following requirements, but no specific conditions that would have provided any protection whatsoever for, for the adjacent property. So, I found that to be really strange and odd as well. So, in other words, the ZHE made findings about hours of operation, made findings about lighting, and this and that, and assurances that were made by the applicant, but translated none of those into conditions, and I think that's out of, you know, very out of the ordinary as far as I know on this type of hearing. Anyway, to me, there are a number of things, I think we have to, just to remind the counselors, there's a reason somebody sometime way back when decided that this was different from the other automobile-oriented uses in a C1, which then became this MXL zone, and until such time as somebody changes those, those are, those are, this is a category that we're supposed to look at very carefully before we say, "Oh, yeah, it meets the conditions and it's good to go." And I don't feel like that was done by either the ZHE or the Lujo, and I'd like to move that this appeal be granted.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, that this appeal be granted. I would also, I will be supporting the appeal being granted. I think this is the first time that we have dealt with this issue under the new IDO, the Integrated Development Ordinance, and I think these are some of the challenges that we are going to face in the future, and as Counselor Benton stated, this is somebody in the past that also created this specific use. You know, I'm very empathetic towards the, the community and the neighborhood. At the same time, I'm also empathetic towards the developer that wants to place his business on that particular location, but again, I think this right now is a challenge, both for the council, also for the ZHE and the other hearing officers and the Lujo, because of the difficulties that we are in now that we face this new IDO plan. Are there any other comments? Counselor Harris?
Yes, I'm going to oppose the motion. I think that this is an appropriate conditional use, and if the council wants to put some conditions on it, I think that would be fine, but in terms of, I mean, we heard a property owner testify that he's been trying to market this property, been trying to sell it, trying to develop it, and I don't think it helps the neighborhood to have vacant land, which is essentially just a collection of weeds and a potential nuisance property, when a business that might not be exactly what they want, but, I mean, we have property owners and property rights, and if what was not a conditional use, just a permissive use, could work, I think it would have worked by now, so I think we're not harming, we're not helping anybody with this proposed motion.
Okay. Counselor Gibson.
One last thing. I'll also be supporting the appeal because, and this is, this is my reason why, and it was in the packet, somebody was concerned about people— And it was in the packet, somebody was concerned about people driving through the neighborhood where there are children and people walking their dogs and that type of thing. I can see that if I were, anybody who buys a car, they take it for a test drive, it would be just so very easy and appealing, I mean, you know, just to make the first right, and before you know it, you're in the neighborhood. But I do, I do want to counter that with the concern I have, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, that a permissive use could be a car wash or auto repair. So, I don't know if that's, would be easier to live next door to than a sales lot. But anyway, so I will also be supporting this. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. I'm not sure what to call you right now. There are, there are many sides that we can take to this, many, many different opinions. One of the first ones that I would like to say is, this is one of those things that we did with an IDO and some changes, and there's a learning curve, but more importantly, this is an ever-changing type of restriction in rulings, because everything changes. And we were, we had an old system that wasn't working and was not allowing what needed to be built to be built and to upgrade and to modernize our city as much as possible, while still maintaining the attitude and the great character that we have in Albuquerque. On this particular issue, it's very difficult for everyone involved, but for me, it's a fact that it's moving. In fact, that the sketch, the drawing that was submitted with this, even though we have specific buffers and specific areas that can be used, those were not on the request. They don't show up anywhere. We can't say now you have to do this. I think this is something that could possibly be worked on, and I would hope it would be, but I think we have to follow the intent of the IDO, and that means we have to be more specific, and if the developers would like to bring it back, obviously, it will go before the whole process again, and with some changes, we hope that will make it more appealing to everyone. So, I will be supporting the Counselor Benton's motion.
Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, to be clear about, about what-
Excuse me, you were allowed 10 minutes in your presentation. They were allowed eight minutes, so they were allowed the additional two minutes during the rebuttal. Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead and proceed.
So, the point is, very little change in terms procedurally between the old zoning code and this in the IDO. So, I don't think we should get lost in the idea that something changed drastically within the IDO. As I asked Mr. Brito, there was that one language about some sort of, some sort of remediation or something like that, but for the most part, it's exactly the same criteria as existed under the previous zoning code. So, the IDO brought those things forward. The IDO didn't try to fix everything about the old zoning code. It was a monumental effort to change from the old zoning code to the IDO, and therefore that was not, not everything was tackled, if you will, according to some of the arguments made by Mr. Sabatini. But there is a continuing improvement process, as Mr. Brito said, going forward with the IDO. The problem with this application was, and I think this showed that there was, this is the reason I believe that the ZHE was in an error and the Lajo was in error in affirming the ZHE, was that this site plan clearly did not follow the basic rules that have existed for, and some new rules within the IDO that add requirements for buffering between uses. So, it's not for us to decide whether a car wash is better than this or that. It's for us to only decide whether they met the requirements to get this conditional use. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to grant the appeal and reverse the decision of the zoning hearing examiner and adopt the findings at a subsequent meeting. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed? That carries on a six-to-one vote. At this time, we will take a dinner break and return in 30 minutes.